Good evening and welcome to the August 19th, 2025 meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I would like to invite Reverend Sandy Hood from Peace United Church of Christ to the podium for our invocation. I would ask that if you're able to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please, Sandy Hood. I'm an omniscient, omnipotent God. We come before you this evening recognizing that for generations this council has met to plan the needs of our community and to seek the needs, to meet the needs of those living in its area. So God, I pray as times before that the Spirit of discernment and wisdom settle over this meeting, that a spirit of calm and unity be present above and beside. And I pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you? All right, we don't have any special presentations this evening, so I'll skip down to item number five, which is persons requesting to be heard. We have, at this time, we have two that have requested to speak, to address the council this evening. I would ask that if you would like to address the council, that you approach the podium and that you state your name and address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. It's not necessary that you sign up, but we do have some folks who have signed up, so we'll allow them to go first. And then afterwards, if you didn't have an opportunity to sign up, or perhaps you didn't know that you could do that, then we will check in the audience and see if anyone else would like to address the council this evening. First, I have Dr. Helen Fowler. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dr. Helen Fowler. I live at 3730 Falling Creek Road, Hickory.
Yes, ma'am.
You want me to?
Go ahead, yeah.
Go ahead, okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, members of the city council, and city traffic engineers, if you are present in the audience, as I hope you are. This whole situation on Falling Creek Road, though complicated, ultimately boils down to one thing: Who is more important? The people who live along Falling Creek Road, or the drivers who use and speed along the road? These people. Which people are more important? As a resident who lives on the road, I'm here to tell you about the impact of speeding traffic on the people who live here. People cannot access their mailboxes without cars zipping past at high speeds. People cannot pick up an odd piece of trash that might be thrown into their yards. People cannot mow the edges of their yards safely. And certainly, people cannot walk along the road without taking their life in their hands. When a car approaches generally at a high speed, people jump off the road into the ditch to keep from getting hit by a car. Cars will not move over, and they speed within feet of anyone walking or crossing the road. When you add speeding trucks and yard crews, the situation is untenable. The solution you mentioned was painting the current speed limit on the road itself. This isn't even a Band-Aid solution to the problem. People will not slow down of their own volition. They're in a hurry. Who are the, the people who are the decision-makers, the city council, would have to make them slow down? You have to make people slow down. According to the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program guidelines, the intersection at 37th Avenue and Falling Creek Road would qualify for a multiway stop with flashing lights, with preferably a flashing light over the road itself. Just within the few years, multiway stops, traffic bumps, and rumble strips have been placed all over town, even on roads that have light traffic and aren't dangerous, like our road is. Referring back to my original statement about the importance and lives of people who live here versus drivers who use our road, this is a dangerous situation, and someone will get killed. People have gotten killed. The mindset of city officials and of drivers must be changed from regarding this road as just a cut-through road to rather regarding this road as one which passes through a neighborhood where people live. Falling Creek residences, residents, pay taxes.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Are you near the end, Dr.?
I am. I'm near the end. I'm nearing the end.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we allow her to continue.
Okay. I'm almost finished.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You may continue.
We are foremost and first a neighborhood of people whose safety needs should be addressed by installing a multiway stop with flashing lights, dropping the speed limit, providing some shoulder as a safety net, and working with homeowners to install sidewalks. We need a well-thought-out traffic calming plan to slow traffic, not just in sections, but on the entire road. The city needs to supply multiple solutions, and we will work with you. There is much more traffic here than ever before. If you're ever out in that area, there are new developments behind Falling Creek Two. They will be pouring onto Falling Creek Road once these developments are completed. More traffic. So I address, I go back to my original question. Who is more important? The people who live along Falling Creek Road, or the drivers who speed along the road to get to point B? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Neil Hudson.
Good evening. My name is Neil Hudson. I live at 3710 Falling Creek Road in Hickory. And I want to sort of reiterate what Dr. Fowler has talked about, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes of your time. But we've had neighbors with their mailboxes being knocked down. I mean, we've had several wrecks. It's kind of a common issue out there now with people wrecking out there. And we even had speeders who actually torn up my driveway. They've actually moved the city sewer main completely off of this foundation out there. So they, speeders are constantly coming through there, and we've asked the police department in times past, and they've been very gracious about setting up these traffic speed, marking your speeds. They've been very gracious about that, but, and people will not slow down. They just, will not just slow down. We obviously had a person that was killed there a few years ago at that intersection of Falling Creek Road and 37th Avenue, which actually resulted in a flashing red light being stopped there. The speed was dropped from 45 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour after that tragedy. We've called the police multiple times. They've monitored the speed, but there again, and I have a special place in my Hartford Police Department, but they can't be out there all the time, and we all know that. And this road, even since Tabernacle has grown, this road has actually just increased in traffic. But Tabernacle at the other end, it's a very good thing, but they've, they've expanded. And so we're getting a lot more traffic and a lot more accidents. And there again, to reiterate what Dr. Fowler said, we'd like to see maybe a four-way stop. Just simply painting something on the road is not going to slow these people down. You've got to do some type of measure to physically slow them down. And so adding a couple stop signs should not be that expensive to install. Paint the speed limit on the, on the road in multiple areas before getting close to that intersection. I do see, see that as being an issue. Add some edging along our roads. Our roads on the side right now have eroded away due to traffic. We get a lot of heavy construction traffic out there. We see the road that has been eroded away. So there again, we, we definitely need some help out there. And we've got some folks that live in our neighborhood that ride bicycles, that run, and I mean literally, I guess if you ask them, they're going to say, hey, we have to duck all the time, or we have to move outside of the road. So there again, we've just, you know, we're just asking for your help. Anything we can do, we'd like to partner with you, but we would like to see some help over in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Is there anyone else present in the audience that would like to address the council this There doesn't appear to be anyone else that would like to address the council this evening. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of August the 5th, 2025.
I move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. That carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings, and once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. That also carries unanimously. We have two council members that are absent this evening. Councilman Wood and Councilwoman Williams are not with us this evening, but we still have a quorum. All right, item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of council or staff that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Yes, I'd like D taken off.
Item number D will be removed from the consent agenda. Any other items removed from the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item D.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second with the removal of item D. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. That carries unanimously. City Manager Warren Wood, item D, please.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, Member of City Council, Mr. Swanson. First of all, I appreciate the folks from Falling Creek Road area coming out here, and out of respect for y'all, we usually don't take things off the consent agenda, but we are tonight because, you know, we need to, you know, flesh some of this out. First of all, so Falling Creek Road was built by the DOT. We took it over for some reason. We typically don't take these roads over. If you, if you drive that road, it feels like a DOT road. We usually have, we got 700 lane miles of residential streets that are pure residential streets. This has residential components on it, but it also moves a tremendous amount of traffic. So it's in a kind of a different category. And one of the issues with this road, when it was built, it was built at a design speed of 45 miles an hour. And we've lowered it to 35, but people are still, they're not, there's a, there's a majority of folks are not going the 35 mile an hour speed limit, and we absolutely acknowledge that. So we did reduce that speed limit to 35 miles an hour a number of years ago. So that's a little bit of the history on, on this road. We have, it's technically considered a, I know there's residential people that live on it, but it's technically considered a collector street. And we've got a couple of those which are anomalies. This is one. 21st Avenue near Hampton Heights is another one. And, and the, the big one we have is Geithner Road to Sixth Street to 16th Avenue connecting in from, from Olinor Road and 321 down to Vumont there at Lowe's Hardware. And you recall, a number of years ago, we had a similar situation where folks from that last one I mentioned came, and there really wasn't anything we could do due to the traffic volume and the truck traffic and whatnot. But this is a little bit different. We, you know, we wanted to take a look at it and have. So this is what we're talking about. Falling Creek Road, to the left is Falling Creek One Neighborhood, to the right is Falling Creek Two. That's the intersection that was, was referenced previously. So there's a lot of residential folks that come in and out of that neighborhood at the stop signs there. And it's about, in the study, the, we did traffic counts along the whole road, but the petition process was for basically 300 feet to the north and 300 feet to the south, based on, and we're going by the, the traffic calming policy on this. And again, all, this didn't technically qualify, but we wanted to take a look at it because we felt like there were some things we could, could do. Again, this road is one of the longest stretches of road we have in our system. We did get a traffic calming petition signed by 14 residents, and, you know, this, based on your policy, this is the way it works in terms of the initial section to look at. The police department over the last three years have, have written 124 traffic citations. I mean, that, that average is 40 a year. But as gentlemen stated, I mean, they can't be everywhere all the time, but this has been the focus of a traffic enforcement area a number of times during that year. And it does carry about 3,000 vehicles a day. The traffic counts were done when school was out, so those numbers are probably even So it is a collector street, and residential folks absolutely live on this roadway. It is a collector street between 127 and 29th Avenue. It's also considered a run route for the fire department EMS. I mean, if there's an issue in Falling Creek One or Two, or along Falling Creek, that's where they're coming. And so the speed tables aren't necessarily an option here, or aren't an option here, but there are other measures that, that are. Again, it didn't technically qualify, but unlike the Geithner Road, 16th Street, 16th Avenue, you know, issue we had that came up a number of years ago, where there really wasn't anything we could do there, or we felt like there were some things we could do here. So we did gather, gather information, and it did show that the average 85 percent, 85 percentile was between 45 and 50 miles an hour, you know, 35 zone. So yes, there's absolutely an issue there. So we have recommend, so what, you know, with our traffic calming policy, it's, it's typically incremental. We try certain solutions. If that doesn't work, we're going to try another solution until our toolbox runs out. So the initial recommendation would be to place speed reduction markings, and I'll show you what those are, in both travel lanes, at different sections of those travel lanes. And then what we would do, we'd go back in and re-measure the traffic counts and speed to see what kind of impact that had. And, and if it didn't have an impact, okay, what's, what's the next, you know, item in the toolbox? So these traffic markings, these are 12 by 18 inch paint markings. It's actually thermoplastic. It's got a reflective quality to it for night and, and during rain. But you can see, and these would be in both travel lanes at different areas, but you can see when you're traveling to the right, the, the hashes get closer and closer together. It does two things. It, it makes the road feel smaller, and it makes the driver uncomfortable to go a certain speed. And it also, the closer you get to the hashes that get closer together, it makes you feel like you need to slow down because the hashes are passing, it feels like you're speeding up, so you need to slow down. That makes, it's almost a psychological toward, sort of treatment.
Am I correct that this is one of the, this will be the first time that we've done this type?
This will be the first time, and we've researched it around the country, and, and we've heard from law enforcement and traffic engineers that it does have an effect on slowing people down.
So it's an innovative approach.
Yeah. And this really doesn't apply itself to some other collector streets that we have, but it, we felt like it would be a good initial, and I'll talk about another treatment as well, but this, we do feel like this is a good initial step. Again, there, these are reflective markings, so it helps visibility at night in what condition. Another treatment would be rumble strips along the center line particularly, making sure people aren't passing, you know, here driving down interstate, and you veer off to the right, and you hit the rumble strip. So that sort of rumble strip treatment along the road as well. One of the challenges is this, this road is scheduled to be resurfaced in a couple of years, and typically, just in all candor, what that does, it makes the speeds go up. So, so, but these rumble strips along with the resurfacing would be installed with that. And again, there may be some intermediate steps when we do the additional counts on the, the traffic counts and the speed and all that to see what kind of impact this has had. The, the, based on your policy, the four-way stop definitely will slow and stop traffic, but it requires a 75% request from a broader area, the people coming in and out of Falling Creek One and Two. So that's a kind of a different process for the four-way stop, because the way the policy reads, you have to, you have to ask folks that are actually coming through that intersection that live there, and get them a 75% approval rate for, and a petition for us to look at it. So then there's other factors that we'd have to consider as well. But, so the message here is that, you know, we want to work with y'all too, and I realize that, you know, somebody asked me one time, what do we do to stop speeding in this town? Well, you put traffic tables everywhere, speed tables everywhere, and that's not practical. But there are other measures that we can use to, to work to try to get the speeds down for safety, because we have seen through the data that there, there is a speeding problem down Falling Creek Road because it was built as a road for people to go 45 miles an hour, and that's how fast they're, a lot of them are going, which isn't safe for both them or pedestrians along the way. So I wanted, that was staff's initial, this isn't a one and done, that's the initial recommendation on this.
When could the striping be done?
And then?
Roughly just a couple weeks after approved. It wouldn't take long.
And then the rumble strips, I've heard the comment, they're loud?
Well, they can, they can be loud. They're effective. They'll slow you down, they'll get your attention, but, and it's not the long rumble strips that you sometimes see in roadways. They're, they're smaller and are designed to keep people inside the lanes in the roadway. Because one of the things that happens in this road, you go around the curve, and you're, you're hugging a curve, and you're maybe going over the center line. Well, this will encourage you not to do that and get your speed down. So that would be an additional treatment.
Would you put the rumble strips in prior to repaving?
It would, actually, the rumble strips would go in with repaving.
With repaving.
Yeah, because it, because they're actually divots that you're carving out in the roadway.
Right, yeah, okay.
And again, this is the, this is the first time we've used this, because most of our residential streets, this, this kind of treatment doesn't apply. But for this street, this speed markings, we feel like are appropriate, and then we can expand that. If, yeah, this is effective in this section of road, this 600 feet, okay, let's, now let's take it to the next level and see if we can get the speed down.
Well, I like the fact that we're doing something that is innovative and has been tested other places and has had positive results. I don't know, I mean, like you said, we've never had this tool in our toolbox. We've never utilized this tool. So I think it is a, is it a good test? This will be a good test place for that.
And again, it's not one and done. We'll look at the data and see what it does.
Right.
Okay, it reduced speed five miles an hour, but we need to go another, however, you know, so what's the next phase that we can do, you know, that would be effective in bringing the speeds down on that road?
And of course, along with that, perhaps we could pay some more attention to it from the traffic enforcement.
Well, I'm sure the, the police over there are listening to this, and they're, they're nodding their heads.
I'm confident that they're hearing us.
Yeah.
I just got a thumbs up from the chief.
Yeah.
But, and, and I want the folks to understand, as well as you've already spoken, that, you know, we're aware that this is an issue, and we are taking steps to address the issue. Please understand that and give us an opportunity to implement some of these things, some of them which are innovative. And of course, if these don't work, we'll go on to the next tool in our toolbox. We do have other tools in our toolbox, but there is a process, and you're following the process, and we are going to implement, and we are going to continue to look at this and determine what, if anything, needs to be done in the future.
And I know y'all, y'all may not walk out of here feeling real good about everything, but I know when the Geithner Road people came and the Sixth Street people, they, they walked out of here with nothing, because there really wasn't anything we can do. But we do feel like there's a, there are a number of things we can do on this road, but it's going to be incremental. We'll talk to you.
Well, if, if, if I may, before we even put this up to vote, hearing the residents on this evening, and one of them mentioned that certainly we're concerned about them, the residents themselves, will there be a problem, or is it possible that instead of putting it to a vote, that we can table it and be able to hear from them? Certainly, and where we are tonight, we probably won't be able to hear how they feel about what we have presented on tonight. But this has been an issue going, so would it be a problem if we table it and to be able to hear how they feel about the presentation?
Well, we, we've heard, and they've...
If we table it, we can't proceed with, with...
Right, and I, I know the, the four-way stop is something, that's a whole different, that, I think that was what we heard. But that's, that is, that treatment is not gonna, would not be appropriate for this roadway, but there are other treatments, but, because they were familiar with what the recommendation was, and, and, you know, so that's why we, we wanted to take time out of respect for them to kind of walk through and explain that this is an incremental process. And you may not walk ahead or not, getting everything you want, but the goal is to get the speed reduced on that street and finding the right formula to do that.
That's effective.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want to just do something to be doing it. We want it to be effective.
I, I wouldn't recommend, you can vote it up, or you can, you can vote table it, or you can vote up, down, or vote to table it.
But if it's table, can, can we?
No.
It can't move forward, but so we have to, yeah, so that's, that was my...
Yeah, the policy says that city council has to approve, you know, speed limit changes and...
Or...
Yeah, and lowering the speed limit to 25, or it, that, that road was built to go 45. We got to put some physical treatments in there to get that speed down.
And by us approving, this basically being our first option to see if it works and if it is effective. But now, if the residents decide to take that approach of the process of the 75% for the four-way stop, they can still do that in that process.
Right. And we'll, there's like, there's no guarantee that if they get the signatures of all the residents and that, you know, we would, we could look at that and make a recommendation. We got to look at the amount of traffic coming in and out, you know, with those four-way stops, who goes next? Everybody's looking left and right, and if there's 3,000 cars, then that would be a consideration. It may work. Signalize intersection, but that's quite expensive, and it doesn't necessarily speed or slow the speed down. People may be speeding to beat the yellow before it gets to red. So, but there, there are some other treatments with these rumble strips and some other things that Steve and I have talked about that we could consider as well. But it'll be, I, I, we're going to look at the data, and after we get the mark, if, if you approve it, when we get the markings in, then we'll start collecting more data and know what kind of impact it has pretty relatively quickly.
A vote in the affirmative doesn't prohibit us from doing other things in the future.
No, absolutely not. All right, yeah. That's what I wanted to know.
Is there any, any other questions?
I'm going to approve of the consent agenda, item D.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Well, let me certainly say to the residents that have come in, come out from Falling Creek, that road that we've had certainly listened to and heard you, and hopefully that this first step, that this option that the city has taken, that starts working, and hopefully it can reduce the speed. But certainly, as we mentioned, that this is just the first step, and that you guys certainly stay in communication with us.
I want to reiterate that, that if this does not solve the problem to your satisfaction, I do hope you will be in touch right away, okay?
And we'll, we'll know with the data that's collected, with the traffic counts and the speeds, and the percentage of the speeds going what speed, and they collect quite a bit of data in evaluating that.
Well, it's also something new that we've never done before, so there might be a component in there where we put out some information in different medias that we have to make people aware of what we're doing there.
And why we're having to do it.
Yeah, and why. That's, that's, that's good. All right, any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign. That carries unanimously. All right, next item on the agenda is, we have one public hearing this evening, so to introduce our one and only public hearing, I'll turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Warren Wood.
Thank you, Mayor Guest. The one public hearing tonight is consideration of a voluntary non-contiguous annexation of property owned by Catawba County ABC Board located at 3370 Springs Road Northeast, containing 5.43 acres, and will be presented by planning director Brian Frazier. And Brian, the clicker's up here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Wood, Mr. Swanson. As Mr. Wood indicated, this is the ABC Board request for annexation. This is just to the north, if you will, northeast, if you will, of Springs Road and the Section House Road intersection. You can, the building is, is pretty much up. It's nearing the end of, of construction. I believe they are trying to get it open this month or, or September. And again, the future development will be a retail ABC store and a warehouse. It's a new model that ABC is working on across the state, instead of having a centralized warehouse for fresh spirits, et cetera. So basically, what you can see... warehouse for, um, fresh spirits, et cetera. So basically, what you can see here is you can see the hashed area of the proposed annexation for ABC. This is Springs Road, St. Stevens, Cool Park, Food Lion Shopping Center. And this property here right now is being graded, uh, legacy, uh, builders for townhomes. And you're seeing grading over here for, um, another single-family project. So there's a lot going on right around this intersection. Uh, this map here is our voluntary satellite annexation map. You can see the property there. Um, anything in white is Catawba County. Anything in, in blue, here's Arrowood. Anything in, in, or had, anything in blue is, right now is, uh, city proper, and anything in the yellow is in the ETJ. So the zoning's already in place. That is NC for neighborhood commercial, so that of course doesn't need to change because it's in the ETJ. Uh, again, you can see some of the R20 county areas, the city neighborhood, um, commercial, and then the various R3, R2 zoning districts of the, um, city. So the voluntary annexation petition, we believe complies with all applicable state statutes. Adequate public services are available in sufficient quantities. Uh, the annexation of the property, we don't believe will cause public service levels to fall, um, below acceptable. And based upon these findings, staff recommends, uh, respectfully that you approve the requested annexation this evening. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Frazier? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we will be conducting a public hearing. Uh, we have some rules pertaining to public hearings that are much like those who would like to request to be heard. Uh, we ask that you approach the podium and that you state your name and address. We also have a 15-minute limit on those who may be speaking. We allow those who may be opposing, uh, a public hearing to speak first, and then we allow those who speak in favor to speak afterwards. If necessary, we'll allow up to five minutes for rebuttal and surrebuttal. We do ask that, uh, there be no outburst or there be no interruptions, uh, during the time either side may be speaking. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in opposition of the annexation that you've just heard described by Mr. Frazier. There doesn't appear to be anyone who would like to speak in opposition. I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to speak in favor. There being no one desiring to speak, I'll declare the public hearing closed and entertain a motion.
Move approval of the voluntary non-continuous annexation.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously. Uh, departmental reports, do we have any appointments to boards or commissions this evening? I have one. Uh, Ms. Lauren Whipple, I would like to appoint her to the, uh, at-large position on the Public Art Commission. Are there any others? All right. Motion to appoint Ms. Whipple to the Art Commission?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. That carries unanimously as well. Any matters not on the agenda, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any general comments by council members or staff? Anybody have anything that they would like to share?
Um, in preparation of hurricane weather and things like that, uh, the city has put out Code Red that if you'll get on the app, you will be notified of emergencies in our area, and I would encourage everyone to do that. I did it yesterday.
And that's, uh, something that not only notifies you of the weather conditions, but also in other emergency-type events and some types of missing, uh, children or things such as that. Anybody else? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? All right, thank you for being here this evening. We stand adjourned.